Good evening and welcome to the August 23 regular city commission meeting. We'll begin this evening with the pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is a consideration of the minutes from August 9 regular minute meeting. Is there any corrections or additions?
No, sir.
If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the August 9 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Pressinger.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Under new business is citizen participation. This is where anyone in the audience can step up to the podium and talk to your city commission about anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Need you to step up to the podium.
My name is Rita Jensen. I was told I needed to come to a meeting in order to get on the agenda for another meeting to be for to place before the commission a proposal to place little libraries perhaps on city property. I live at the end of a dead end. It's not exactly a high pedestrian area. I think that it would serve Leavenworth well, and I just would like to throw that out for consideration.
Okay, what you need to do is get with the city clerk or the city manager to get a date for your meeting.
If there's consensus to put it on the agenda, it's correct.
We do have that as far as personal.
What's that?
We do have that, I believe, as far as private, private property.
Private property but not public.
Right.
So if you'd like it on the agenda to discuss changing that, we could certainly do that.
Is there consensus to do that?
Yeah, they'll discuss it, yeah. So do I need to stay then to the end of the meeting to?
No, you're, but you're welcome, you're welcome.
I may do that, I just, you said I needed to talk to somebody else, so.
Should be either one.
Number two is the mayor's appointments. I would move that we appoint John Carroll to a term ending 12/31/18, Bob Bueller to an unexpired term ending 12/31/16 for the airport advisory board. For community development advisory board, reappoint Mike Law to a term ending 8/31/19, to reappoint Catherine Schiller to a term ending 8/31/19, and appoint Bobby Snyder to a term ending 8/31/19. And the Leavenworth preservation committee to appoint Gordon Johnson to a term ending 4/15/19.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Again, voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes four to zero. Request a waiver for a transit merchant's license at the community center.
This is a request for a waiver. Recently, the city clerk's office received a request for a transit merchant license at the community center. And after reading through the ordinance, just because we were trying to put together the license, we discovered that there was a section in the ordinance that specifically prohibits transit merchant license from being issued at the community center. It was kind of an oversight by staff because this particular person who's had a consignment, a kids' closet consignment sale, has had three of them in the last, this'll be the third one. So after looking at that, there is a provision that says the governing body can grant that waiver. So we did receive a request from Mrs. Walker for a waiver. She was supposed to be here this evening, but something came up at the last minute and she was unable to attend. But Tammy Metzger from the community center is here if there are any questions. This is only the definition of a transit merchant I've included in here. It's basically if they don't have a business already within the city. So if somebody wanted to have an event at the community center and their existing business in the, in the community, this, this prohibition doesn't, isn't part of that. They can still do that. If they're a nonprofit, local civic organization, they can still have those. If it's a fundraiser for a local, that's not part of what is prohibited. But this particular one would be prohibited under the ordinance, so the waiver's been requested by this.
And I assume she is, is paying tax liability?
She has.
She does have a license?
Yeah. Yeah, that's part of how we issue that. We have to have a copy of the tax exempts, or, I'm sorry, the tax, sales tax certificate. And I know they do, the community center does get quite a bit of revenue from renting out the gym and this type of thing, so Tammy could speak more to that if you have any questions regarding that.
Well, I know why we did this. We did this to try to keep some of the transit merchants out of town. We were being overran by them, and that was been six, seven, eight years ago, I think.
Yeah, and they were, well, they also were competing with many of our local businesses. And, and where I really don't have a problem with this is they're really not directly competing with, like, our local businesses. But I think that this opens the door of if you give one person a waiver, and I'm not saying I'm not going to approve the waiver tonight because she's done it in the past, but, but, you know, I think it's something that, you know, we need to proceed cautiously because, what is it, the Snap-on tool, I think, became really one of the lightning rods of that, yeah.
We had a lot of different things down there which was definitely, definitely competition with our local merchants.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, I'd like to be really, just, you remind, to be mindful of that, because, you know, you've got brick and mortar people, taxes, and a lot of other overhead on this. And, like I said, I don't see, you know, a stand now, but if she does become, you know, a direct competitor, maybe with some of our other merchants in the future, you know, I, I hope that the commission would consider that.
This is a consignment sale, so it's a little different than somebody just out there selling it. It's people bringing in things that they no longer need and trying to sell them, which I think is a great idea, as kids grow out of things pretty quickly.
Yeah, and that's why I said there's, she's not competing with anybody, any type of local business on this. It's kind of unique.
Well, I think, Ben, what you said, three years that she's been there?
This would be the third.
Yeah.
I mean, we have no legal obligation, but I think we have a moral obligation to go ahead and give her the request.
Yeah, I would agree. So do you need a motion?
No, I, I think I agree with what has been said.
Okay. If there's, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the waiver request for the transit merchant's license for the community center consignment sale.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Pressinger.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes four to zero. Under bid's contracts and agreement, consider a real estate contract with the Ferguson Hotel Development.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, in the course of working with the Ferguson design team, it became apparent that in order to fit parking in their hotel on the new site, they would need their hotel as far east as possible. When they brought in a sketch, everybody noticed that a property that they had their hotel on was not included in the Tiff district, and it was not included in the property that they purchased. Some research turned up that it's, that's because it's part of the Arbor Way. The city purchased the Arbor Way in 1977. We did a search, and there's no indication that there's any restrictions. So we had our city attorney draft a real estate agreement that would transfer this about 25-foot wide area to Ferguson for their second hotel project for a fee of $10 that would add it to the hotel project site. So that, real estate contracts before you tonight. If you have any questions about the hotel or the transfer, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions by the commission?
No.
How big an area is it? 25 feet wide by how?
It's about 25 feet, and it's, it's half a block, so it's from the alley to the, to the end of Pawnee.
Okay.
It's 40 feet.
Okay. If there's not any more questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into a real estate contract with Ferguson Hotel, transfer the property as explained to Ferguson for the amount of $10.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Item number five.
Real, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, when do they start demolishing their homes?
They have not pulled a demolition permit as of right now. And there's no timetable. It's just all based on incentive dollars.
Okay.
Item number five is bids for WPC roof replacement. Mike, you got that?
Yes, sir. I also have Mike Cooper, Deputy Director, help with the specifications, and Chuck Staples, Police Water, Water Flusion Control Superintendent. This is a rebid from the administration building roof that we did earlier in the year and realized that we had some errors that made bidding complicated for the bidders. So we have put together a better set of bid specifications to replace the roof. To the best of our knowledge, this is the original roof that was installed in the 1970s when the building was constructed, although it's been reworked different times, most notably in the 1990s when we added the belt filler press and the lightning protection system and some other work was done up on the roof. We put together specifications, worked with local vendors to make sure we knew what we were doing when it comes to roofing specifications, and sent it out for bids. Ultimately, we had a pre-bid meeting with the people that were prospective bidders and identified several areas that were clarified and solidified as to what exactly we wanted when we were done. And we received three, three competitive good bids on the project, and we do recommend that the city commission accept the low bid from American Roofing for $152,333.
Any questions? Mr. McDonald.
You had mentioned that some of the, the changes in the pre-bidding, you know, and it's, it's quite a marked difference from what the original engineer's estimate is. What, what other things have changed in that?
Well, the bids we received earlier in the year, the one that most closely we believe matched what we intended to build was about $146,000. And that was not from American Roofing. They said our specs were too confusing to bid. So we figured they would be more competitive than the other firm that we did get a bid from. So we felt that the bid, the engineer's estimate was probably reasonably competitive. And then at the pre-bid meeting, we did several things that we knew would raise the price, but I did not believe it would raise it as much as it did. But we, one of which was we clarified how the lightning protection is supposed to be dealt with, a certified lightning protection firm, and it's got to be inspected before and after, that sort of thing. We added quarter-inch wood board across the entire roof to provide much, provide a roof surface, or the roof beyond that, less susceptible to damage from workers on the roof or other pale and that sort of thing, very similar to what we did here at City Hall. And then, because that is a hot, moist environment, we increased our vapor removal, there's a layer that they called a hot mop vapor barrier, which basically prevents the moisture from building up under the roof, prevents it out to the side. And lastly, we directed them to reset the air conditioning units down actually on the concrete roof rather than rest on top of the, of the existing concrete roof deck rather than sit on top of the new roof, where they're subject to vibration than where we've seen leaks in other buildings. So we really tightened the specifications up and it raised the value of the project probably at quite inaccessible, we had anticipated with our original, original bid. I suspect even if we hadn't done that, it probably would have been over the engineer's estimate. It's just over it now by about $20,000 or $25,000.
Thank you for elaborating.
Nancy, do you have any?
No.
I'm just glad that a lot more companies got the bid.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
We like, we like when American Roofing gets the bids, because they stand behind their work and they come.
And we can find them.
Yeah.
We know where they live.
Yeah.
Ready for a motion?
Go ahead. I move that we approve the bid for the wastewater treatment plant and building roof project not to exceed $152,333. Boarded to American Roofing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin bidding, or voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes four to zero. Thank you. First consideration ordinances, this is all under Pat.
Six through 12.
Yep, six through 12. First consideration, 2016 Uniform Public Offense.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, let me apologize for the series of housekeeping measures that might be a little monotonous tonight. Item number one for me is that the police department is requesting the commission place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2016 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities for use by the city of Leavenworth. This is our standard offense book that we use annually to enforce the law in the community. It's not effective until the local governing body passes it. I've outlined a series of changes. There are three or four, most of which have no substance. There's generally a tweak or two. They're all very minor and not, not substantive at all. So I would ask you to place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts that.
Any questions?
No.
Is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes, there is, okay.
The next item, Commissioner, is to, the police department's requesting the commission place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2016 Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities for use by the city of Leavenworth. Same circumstances. It's our annual adoption of this book that we use to enforce the traffic laws in our community. Again, there's a few tweaks from last year to this year, but nothing of substance, and I would ask you to adopt that, or place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts that.
Is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Chief, one question.
Yes, sir.
On this one, on DUI, I understand, I could have the strong, recent Supreme Court A citizen doesn't have the right to refuse a breathalyzer, or they do, I mean, you haul them off, but they have a right to refuse an invasive, a blood test. Is that, I think that's what I read.
The opposite of that. Essentially, the Supreme Court on the, on the breath test, we can't, we cannot conduct a search of a person without a search warrant.
Okay.
And so, as you can tell in the Section 30.2, which is preliminary breath test, that's been amended, and then refusal to submit to alcohol or a drug test, that's been deleted. Essentially, what happened is they made it, the Kansas law was a crime to do that. The Supreme Court said you can't, it's not a crime to do that. What happens is there are still significant administrative penalties. You lose your license and that sort of thing. But you can't, yes, essentially, you can't be forced to do that. And then if you don't do it, it's a crime. There are still the other parts of it that exist. So that's, you're pretty close, but that's essentially what's happened here.
So if a person would refuse a breath test and you know they're lit up, can you, how can you charge them DUI?
You have to make your case based on the evidence that you discover. For example, the alcohol, smell of alcohol, bloodshot eyes, the evidence that you obtain. What you, what you can't do then is force someone to provide a breath test or a blood test. The problem was that was considered a crime, and that would be a, right, and that was a violation, the Supreme Court said that's a violation of the Fourth Amendment, search without a warrant. So they, it's not a crime, but there's still license issues that you'll have to deal with. And 99.9% of the time, it is generally, your license gets suspended for a year if you refuse a breath test. Or if you take it and you fail it, it's significantly less, sometimes 30 days, that sort of thing. That's the difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat, do you still do the proficiency tests, you know, walk the straight line, hold your foot up?
Yes, sir. We still do all, there's some standard training that the officers do, to that, in addition to the other things about.
With the body camera, that should pretty well give you.
Right, yeah.
Sufficient evidence.
Right.
Well, that cameras in the cars and videos are always yes or no.
Okay, 2016 Traffic Control Devices.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, the police department's requesting the commission place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2016 Intersection Traffic Control Device Master Index. We have a master list of all the intersections in our community that are regulated, and every year we bring it before you to adopt it. From last year to the year, there were no changes. We did not add any new intersection control devices.
Everybody, is there a consensus on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. 2016 Review and Update.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, in 2015, the Leavenworth Police Department conducted a complete physical audit of the municipal code of ordinances, traffic regulations. This has identified a Section 110 in the local ordinances. How we were able to do that was sort of unfortunate. We had an officer that was injured in off-duty in a traffic accident, tore up her shoulder pretty good, had to have some surgery, was out, sort of a light duty capacity for a long time. So we have been wanting to do that, that audit. Essentially, what we did was had this officer review every single item, every single line in ordinance in Section 110. And then physically go out into the community where that ordinance was identified and inspect the ordinance and compare it with the signage, that made sure that the language in the ordinance matched what we wanted done in the community. We discovered about a half a dozen instances in which the language in the ordinance was correct, but the signage was wrong. So we went ahead, proceeded, and changed the signage to match, so we were in agreement with that. Then we had some instances which are outlined here in the policy report where the ordinance language was incorrect, but the signage in the community was good. A lot of what we discovered were some typographical errors, nothing really of substance. I've listed those, 110-38, a small change in the one-way streets, 110-39, one-way alleys, 110-41 speeds, there's some, again, typographical errors. The two best examples I'll give you here without reading all of it is, there's some language in 110-41 that says, "The interior streets of Valley View Apartments," that is now Woodland Village. The speed limit sign says 20, but the signs say 5 miles an hour. So we would like the signs to match the language in the ordinance and reflect 5 miles an hour in that particular location. And then if you go down to 110-47, at some point, 10th Avenue was called Shoemaker Street. I am not seasoned enough to remember that.
Oh, my God.
There's two of us that are.
But the ordinance apparently still reflects Shoemaker Street in some locations. So we wanted to change that to call it 10th Avenue, because it's 10th Avenue all the way through. And these ordinances are the ones that, that, we're actually pretty pleased with the audit. There wasn't a whole lot of significant errors to it, but this is our opportunity to go back and correct that and make those changes. So I would ask you to place those on first consideration.
I imagine the police officer wishes she hadn't hurt her shoulder.
It was miraculously healing powers after a while.
Yeah, I'm ready to come back.
Is there a consensus on this one?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, number 10, 110-78, no parking.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, if you might recall, I was before the governing body several weeks ago to talk about a couple of parking issues that we had. This is for you to consider placing an ordinance on first consideration that changes the municipal code of ordinances, Chapter 110-78, no parking anytime, by adding the following language, Ottawa Street, North Side, from 20th Street to the entrance of the parking lot at Sportsfield. This is near the new T-ball, newer T-ball field. We want to make sure that the parents park in the parking lot and no little ones get caught in that little bit of busy intersection. So I would ask you to place that on first consideration.
Consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 11, 110-81, no parking, stopping, or standing.
Yes, sir. I'd ask you to place an ordinance on first consideration that removes the provision to the municipal code of ordinance, 110-81, no parking, stopping, or standing during school hours. Specific language is 21st Street, East Side, we're 300 feet north of the intersection with Choctaw Street. This is over by the Eagles T-ball field, practice field. We had talked about that. For some reason, this ended up in the school hour location, so it's neither school hour relevant, and we would like it out of there anyway, because we want folks to be able to park near the T-ball field.
Yeah. I noticed the other day, there was this soccer group over there, and they did not park in where the sign said, "No parking." I was really proud of them.
Consensus on item number 11?
Yes.
Item number 12 is 110-45, turning movements on specific streets.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, I'd ask you to place an ordinance on first consideration that changes Section 110-45, turning movements on specific streets. This is the very last tweak, I think, of the Henry Leavenworth Traffic Flow Plan. On Limit Street, no left turn traveling eastbound and no right turn traveling westbound to enter Henry Leavenworth Elementary School. This strongly encourages our parents to follow the traffic flow plan out there. We would like them to come into the one particular location. And we've been in contact with Mr. Lunsford out there, and we're all in agreement. This is the best plan. We've been instituting that with police officers since school opened. And although the first day was a little bit chaotic, and the second day was less chaotic, the last few days have been really, really, really well. The flow is working pretty well. We're down to probably less than 15 minutes, like any other regular school, keeping in mind that 22nd Street is back open to two-way traffic, the road construction projects. This is the last little bit we'd like to do, and we think this'll get us in the best position to, to keep the traffic moving out there.
Quick, quick question, Chief. Make sure I understand, it's Limit Street. I'm going eastbound on Limit Street, between 21st and 20th, is this where this applies?
Yes.
And when I hit 20th, I cannot turn northbound?
No, this is on Limit Street, between 20th and 22nd Street. You can't turn into the parking lot. That's what it means.
Okay, I'm coming.
Either way, you're traveling.
I can't cross over.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Either way, you can't turn into the parking lot there. You got to go around.
You got to go around, okay, got it.
Any other questions? Not, is there a consensus on item 12?
Yes. Yes.
Have, if you, I know this, we haven't passed this yet, but is that, are they kind of working that plan right now, or is this going to be a big change?
No, no, we, we haven't been letting people turn in there with police officers telling them they can't turn. So what I was probably, what I was going to do is if there wasn't any objection tonight, probably just go ahead and sign it under the 90-day rule, which I have the authority to do, and then pass the ordinance in a couple of weeks. But we've been doing that since school started.
Okay.
Good. All righty, number 13. Thank you, Pat.
Yes, sir.
First consideration, consideration ordinance for home rule authorizing city to issue general obligation bonds for the industrial park.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, the issue before the governing body tonight is to place a home rule ordinance on first consideration to issue general obligation bonds to provide funds to finance the development of an industrial, commercial park facility in the city, together with all things necessary and incidentals to stimulate economic development and employment in the city. What this is, is there is existing language on the books that allows the city to issue bonds for certain activities, for roads, for infrastructure. However, the nature of the industrial park, the shared cooperative payment that we're going to embark with the county, is not accounted for in ordinance. So what this does is put the mechanism in place to allow us to eventually issue those bonds. I want to make it clear that this does not issue bonds. This does not even start the bond issuance process. Everything related to that will come back to the governing body. The interlocal agreement setting the total cost of the purchase will come back to the governing body. This just allows the mechanism to, to start the process to be in place to eventually issue bonds when we get to that point.
Any questions?
No.
No. This is also consensus item, is there a consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 15, first consideration ordinance to rescind the parking special use permit on North Third between Kiowa and Kikapoo.
I think we missed number 14.
Did we?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We missed, yeah.
Back up to number 14, first consideration ordinance for full faith and credit tax increment bonds.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, these tax increment bonds are related to the second Ferguson Hotel Development, and the payment of these proceeds to Ferguson will follow the development agreement that the commission has approved and Ferguson has approved, and we passed a number of months ago.
Right. Any questions to the commission?
No.
Not, is there a consensus?
Yes.
Now, number 15, to rescind parking special use permit from North Third between Kiowa and Kikapoo.
Our city clerk will handle this.
The issue before the city commission is to consider rescinding the special use permit, allowing a parking lot on four lots in the area of North Third Street between Kikapoo and Kiowa. Kikapoo and Kiowa. Um, this was discussed at the August sixteenth study session. This was an ordinance that was passed in nineteen eighty-five issuing, um, the special use permit. In today's, um, current zoning ordinance, it's not required. Um, and also, in looking at this, um, the ordinance was written incorrectly, and the laws that it reflects in ordinance is, are incorrect. So, just as, uh, kinda to clean that up, um, I think it's best that we just rescind that, and as I say, it's, it wouldn't even be required, um, in today's zoning, and it is.
Any questions?
No.
Not, is there a consensus to rescind?
Yes.
Yes.
There is? All right. Uh, consent agenda, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to present the claims for August sixth, 2016 through August nineteenth, 2016, in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Net amount for pay number seventeen, effective August nineteenth, 2016, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-four cents, including fire and police pension, in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Begin voting, Commissioner Pressinger. All right, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Uh, anything, have any, anything on your minds?
I do. Um, I had, we get a city manager's report, and I'd like to request from, uh, the city manager that the assistant city manager used to submit a report. If we could continue that tradition, it helps keep us abreast of the meetings and other things that are happening in the community that he's participating in. I, it's a good wealth of information, sir, ma'am. Okay? And the other thing I have is coming to our Riverfront Community Center on Thursday, September first. It's gonna be from six-thirty to eight-thirty. It's the Alliance for Kansas, um, uh, the Alliance for a Healthy Kansas, and it's, um, going to be a forum to expand can care within the communities. Uh, the, from what I understand, they're doing like thirty of them through, um, the state, and this is our opportunity to have this at our local community, and I just wanted to inform the public and the commission, uh, to participate in this. There'll be a lot of good information, uh, given to the community about the pros and cons of expanding can care. And, you know, with our many seniors in our community and three senior centers in that, I think this'll be of interest to the public, so I'll go ahead and give that.
Commissioner Weekly, is that up to date? Because I, am I thinking of something else, that they were gonna have those, and the state canceled it and said, "You have to do it online"? Is that a different issue?
Uh, that's a different one. I did speak to the facilitator on this today, so this is, this is definitely happening.
Okay, so this one's so what?
Yeah.
Something else, I think, something, yeah, something that...
Yeah.
Yeah, there were listening sessions. Yeah, listening sessions around the state.
Okay, that can only be done online, or you can submit online.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, this is, this is, uh, you can, they rented the community center. You can physically go, and there'll be a presentation and to ask, and to ask, and answer questions on that.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, go.
Yes, I had, last week, um, I talked about the, uh, transportation issues in our community, and I'm, I'm gonna keep hitting on it. Well, as long as I'm commissioner, I'm gonna keep hitting on this, but I was real disappointed, because this was a public meeting, and there were only two of us there. It was, it was pretty sad. You know, the greater Kansas City area, they're trying to think of outside-the-box ways that we can improve our transportation infrastructure, and, um, so I wanna continue with this. I wanna continue to meet with, with some of them. I know, um, our staff, I believe, Mike, are you, you on the transportation committee for Mark and that, but I would like to, you know, we're the decision-makers here, and I wanna see at least to get, for the next, you know, look at a long-range plan, that we could look at providing transportation into the Kansas City area and transportation around our community. Um, those are two very different issues, and, but I think both are equally important, and the, the greater Kansas City area transit has come as far as the Legends, and we're so close to the Legends, I just really would like to look at a long-range planning effort of some sort to at least study the issues. So, that's just my two cents worth.
Shall we?
Sounds like a viable idea.
Yeah.
Now, I personally would be, I shouldn't say this, but I will. I, I would gladly meet them at the Legends to bring them down here, but they're gonna have to find their own way back.
That's right. That's a good point.
They definitely could use the shopping.
Yeah.
Mark, I drop in. Paul?
I just wanna remind everybody that Buffalo Bill Days is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this week, and so I'm hoping we get good weather. It's a festival.
It's Friday at Washington?
Three o'clock is when it starts.
Tomorrow night?
At Ray Miller Park.
Tom, do you have anything?
I should talk fast.
And I don't either. Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Begin voting, Commissioner Pressinger.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.